Welcome, everyone. We are going to start with the, I'm talking slow for, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Here.
Didio.
Here.
Matola.
Here.
Clay.
Here.
Wendis.
Here.
Wakefield.
Absinthe.
Bush.
Here.
Campbell.
Here.
Tedford.
Here.
Gesse.
Here.
Latender.
Here.
Levecq.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. All right, citizens' forum, is everybody here? No, nobody's here? Come on, Janaro. Go ahead.
My name is Janaro, I live in Vernon in West Main Street, I'm pretty sure a lot of y'all know where I live, I'm always outside. Now, I'm in concern because CCMC, the hospital, will let my son get operated until he gets a PCR test. When I find out what a PCR test is, from the individual, that it means gene replication devices, molecular biology and gene testing, so when I look up the patent for it, it has an FCC ID chip for it, the PCR test does, right? So now, is approved by the FCC as an ID, because they said an FCC is the product of an ID assigned by the FCC to identify wireless product in the market. The FEAC chooses three or five character guaranteed coded to identify that business, Moderna, Pfizer, and the rest of them, okay? Now, the PCR test, it's not even a virus check, it is to copy your DNA, okay? I'm really furious that they're using a PCR test with ethylene oxide that causes skin irritation, eye irritation, nose irritation, it takes your smell away, your taste away. Didn't Lamont say that takes your taste away and your smell away? Doesn't COVID does that? But before you get checked for COVID, don't you get checked first for PCR test though first? But there's a chemical in here that says, by the United States, agriculture, that it will get you sick, guaranteed, for three to five business days. So, you know, when they tamper with somebody's child, people shouldn't be playing around with somebody's son. Listen, this should be against the law. This is people's DNA being sold in a black market, because I'm pretty sure it was on Channel 5, because the lady that said it lived in Connecticut, said that a lot of the companies that have been taking DNA in the United States have been selling it to China, but China's not trying to sell any of theirs here, and that they've been using a lot of the PCR tests to do this. How come nobody talk about that on Channel 3 and Channel 61? I know they've been talking about the lawsuit that has gone on with the children now, that they're trying to force mandate the children, that 11-years-old DC that said that they don't need the permits permission to get vaccinated. Why is they doing this? Why is they trying to force chemicals that can actually really hurt people, more than the virus? And people are aware, if you're aware, you should be held responsible, because if we're so-called miners, and the people that's supposed to care about us, they should be helping us and not destroying us. So since people can sue the certain bigger companies, and people, I feel that if my son is being manipulated, so they could take DNA from him, because I was told, and I got the paperwork for that too, that the people get paid to do PCR tests. So if I ask my little homie right here, "Come on, do a PCR test with you," they get, the first choice gets paid for it, because my aunt works there, she told me, "Yeah, we get paid for those PCR tests." You know, my great-grandmother had 32 children, do you think, you have to understand, you're playing with children. I've been in jail for over my whole life, I used to fall asleep on my bunk and listen to pedophiles, "Oh, I'll rape you, oh, I'll take your butt cheeks, oh, I'll tie you up." Do y'all know what that is? Finding out that an 88-year-old man raped his two granddaughters over the border of Mexico, sodomized them, and you're feeding them and talking to them, you don't even know he's a pedophile? That's what I feel the education here in Connecticut is, I feel that they're pedophiles, they want to teach about sex education to my child? You're a pedophile. That is not your choice, that is not your agenda, that is my child, not yours. I am American, respect the Constitution of the United States, and go after the corporate companies and tech companies that are using knowledge amongst us that are destroying us and try to destroy us and get rid of us, okay? If I have to die for my countrymen, I'm willing to, okay? And I do believe in Lucifer, because he is real, and I know he is, because I used to play with Baphomet all the time when we used to play with the Ouija board, when I was little, with my great-grandmother and them, okay? And I don't like him, but I respect him, all right? And I feel that this is Lucifer's time, but it's God's time too. And I respect God, respect people's choices. You are the people, you represent us. Without y'all, we can't be nobody, okay? If I don't come here and argue with you about this, people are going to be forced, all right? And that's not right, because I don't want to fight y'all, but I'm fucking willing to, if you violate my constitutional right, and I feel that you're offending me and you're trying to sell me to the black market, and there's enough evidence to prove it, because Fauci is being found guilty on a lot of things, because Senator Paul is blaming him for a lot of things, that he should not be being blamed for. And it comes from his, man, please, man, help the people, okay? I'm sorry about this, but it's the truth. Protect the people, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Nothing overrides the Constitution.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, for letting me speak my brains out.
Do you want to speak to? Come on up. That first one wasn't for you, I was messing with Janaro when I was playing with him.
I just need your name and your address.
Good evening. Elena Owens, 24 Elizabeth Lane.
Can you use the microphone, because this is live on TV.
Elena Owens, 24 Elizabeth Lane. Mayor Champagne and members of the council, I am coming before you this evening in the hopes that the preliminary information I'm here to present quickly makes its way to planning and zoning. Do you want to acknowledge that Andy and I did exchange calls earlier today, and I hope to connect with either him or George tomorrow. I have been a resident of the Whitney Crossing community on Elizabeth Lane for almost 15 years, and I recognize that the past several weeks have been difficult for many homeowners as they have experienced flooding in and around their homes due to record amounts of rainfall. The record amounts of rainfall have specifically been disastrous to several homeowners on Elizabeth Lane whose basements have flooded. I am here tonight to inform the town that those of us hardest hit have had to bring in professionals to help mitigate and remediate the water damage, and their commentary, the professionals' commentary, is all resoundingly the same. The construction of our neighborhood in the period of 2006 to 2008 was done negligently, and the town signed off on a project that has significant insufficient drainage. I have not yet spoken to all 50-plus homeowners in the neighborhood, but the information that gathered from 12 households indicates that we have a systemic drainage problem that could and should have been addressed very differently when the neighborhood was constructed. I'll save my specific findings for future discussion with the planning department, but please know that we are experiencing on Elizabeth Lane has been identified by these professionals Had the construction of individual homes been completed with adequate footing drain systems, proper grading, and a catch basin system, all of this would have been preventable. It's hard to believe that in a relatively new development, my preliminary findings show that almost a quarter of the homes here have had to deal with some sort of water mitigation in the basement, whether it be ceiling, sump pump installation, French drain installation, or regrading. As I speak with more neighbors, I guarantee that the number of homeowners impacted will increase. Thank you for your time this evening, and I look forward to speaking further with planning to understand how the town saw fit to approve a totally flawed project when it comes to proper drainage.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else for public comment? You had to pull the mic down a little bit. Not at all.
Mary Ann Levecq, 183 Bolton Road. This evening, I would like to thank the town of Vernon for the continued effort to vaccinate our town's citizens. I had the pleasure of meeting and working as a volunteer at Rockville General Hospital Vaccine Clinic with Amy Watt, the Parks and Rec Assistant Director. The talent and organizational skills Amy displayed were phenomenal and impressive. Thank you, Amy. We have so many talented employees and are so lucky. I feel the need to recognize them and all their hard work as we continue our new path to normalcy. Thanks to everyone, you are truly, you truly make Vernon special. The COVID-19 took a family member very early in the pandemic, so this may be why I am so passionate on this subject. The COVID-19 has a new variant called Delta, which is highly contagious and apparently deadly, from the statistics recently released. It is your choice to be vaccinated or not, but please, reach out to your health care provider for the information on the vaccine and the option for you, your family, and your friends. I can promise you that all the research done has found no tracker, no microchip, and no magnet. It's your choice, but give your family and friends the choice also. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, seeing none. Brian, Executive Session.
Mr. Mayor, the Town Council pursuant to the authority given in Connecticut general statutes 1-206D hereby moves to go into Executive Session to discuss contract negotiations, and invites Michael J. Procaro, Town Administrator, and Don Masilek, Assistant Town Administrator, to attend.
Seconded by Polly. All those in favor? Unanimous. We'll be back, everyone. All right, Brian?
Mr. Mayor, the Town Council hereby approves the Memorandum of Understanding, MOU, between the town of Vernon and the town of, and, sorry, let's start again. The Town Council hereby approves the Memorandum of Understanding, MOU, between the town of Vernon and the Vernon Police Association as presented.
Second, Mary Ann.
Seconded by Mary Ann. Any comments? Nope. Go ahead, Laura.
I'd like to just state that I fully support this. I really feel that we need to give as much support to our police officers that work so hard in our town and protect the people, so I want to give this a huge endorsement to vote yes.
Thank you. Anybody else? Bill?
I agree with Laura. I think it's important that we vote for this, it's important that we send a message to the police department that we appreciate what they do. We're not one of those towns that's looking to defund the police department, we support them 100%. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. I can't say enough for our police department, I know we have a number of members here tonight. Thank you is not enough. We really appreciate all that you do, the participation, being part of the community is an extremely important value that we all hold, and you are there for us, and we are there for you. Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Polly?
I second everything that everybody has said. I grew up with some of the officers that retired. Our chief dropped as an officer. No one says he was only paid to hold the cancer families or just to be part of the community. And the town has moved to be there to be that acquaintance with for over a year, and just appreciate everything that you've done. For a great, um, one day.
Thank you, Polly. Julie?
I agree with you, Polly, I can't wait to hear the stories later.[961.62][961.62](laughter)
There might be some money involved here.
But we do, we wholeheartedly support our police and thank you for everything you do, and I'm in total support of this amendment.
Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor. I personally would like to thank each and every officer for their dedicated service to our town. I am in full support of this, and I would like to, you know, just make it a note that what you, ladies and gentlemen, do for the residents of our town is greatly appreciated, and I really, truly am behind this 150%, thank you.
Linda?
So I concur as well with everything that's been said. We appreciate, we value what you do for our community, I think there's a lot of unspoken words of, from people who really do appreciate the effort that's given, and we want you to know that we really respect what you do, we hope you'll stay with us for a lifetime. Thank you.
I endorse this, I really appreciate what the police do for our community, and good luck. Thank you.
Jim?
Um, yes, ditto with everything that's been said. It's a particularly difficult environment these days, so I can't say enough about this police department. Congratulations to all of you, and we're here to help as much as you are. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mary Ann.
I'd just like to say thank you to all, you're doing a great job. I know it's not an easy job, coming from a blue family, I understand, so thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I concur with everything everybody said, and I agree and support you guys, and I know some of you guys for a long time, and maybe not some other ones who have retired since, and I know the quality and quantity of work that you gentlemen do and ladies do, and really appreciate all you do, and we hope we can, this is a little token, I shouldn't say token, but a little thing we can do to help you, it's great, and we appreciate all that you do. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that was everybody, actually. All right, well, thank you, guys. All right, all those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you, guys. All right, I got a little bit for presentations tonight. I put my glasses on. Well, you know what, let's start with, I don't know if you guys know this, we got a lot of rain. In fact, I know, I know. We're looking at 14 inches so far, and we heard about some basements full, it's all over town. Half of my neighborhood, the neighborhoods next door, I mean, if you drive by, you're going to see that there are pumps all over the place. The rivers are, have crested. Sorry. The, we've dealt with a lot of debris throughout town, I'm hoping that we don't get any more rain for another month, would be great, but I think our Public Works came out and handled things wonderfully. They came in the whole weekend, where, I mean, everything we asked them to do, trying to help our residents, trying to get things cleared up, we had problems with our roads, we had flooding on our roads, I can't, I can't thank them enough, and the fire department was there whenever we needed them, police department as well. Mike, you have anything you want to add to that?
Through the mayor, there's a handout to the town councils that the mayor had referenced. I mean, we're literally seeing something that we don't normally deal with when it comes to, from an emergency management standpoint, you know, we prepare for the storm, we prepare for the incident, whatever it might be. This has been rain after rain after rain, and we've never been able to fully recover, so it's put a lot of pressure and stress on our stormwater management systems. As the mayor stated, we're taking a hard look at them, trying to modernize them where we can, and we will have additional information to share with you for the August meeting on some of the, some of our findings in that area as well, so that we can help prevent this and have a better, better system, enhanced system for the next time, hopefully another 20, 30 years, but we want to share that with you as well.
We most likely, due to some damage that was created, we most likely will be back in August with some numbers, probably going to look for some money to fix some items that were caused during these storms. Hopefully, nothing else breaks during this time, but, you know, I'm going to skip right to one, one thing we'll talk about. We had some citizens who had called in a sinkhole at the Vernon Dog Park, and we went down, we filled the sinkhole in, and it came back again. This is in just the small dog area. So I went down there with Public Works, we were looking at it and realized that there, essentially, is a drainage, it's like a retention basin, that it looked like all the water from the old mill had emptied into, and then there was a pipe from there that went to the river. Well, nobody knew it was there until we had all this rain, and the water, instead of going out the pipe, came into the pipe. And when it came into the pipe with such force, it just continuously took all the dirt away. So when we filled it up again, not realizing there was this big pipe under there, the same thing happened. So we've closed the small dog park, part of it, and as soon as the water recedes, we're going to get rid of the pipe, so the pipe doesn't continue to do this. You know, sometimes you find things, and thankfully, the residents called it in, and, but we're going to solve that issue, but until then, we're going to keep the small dog park, park, closed, and every morning, we're going to have somebody from Parks and Rec down there, just making sure that there's nothing else wrong and everything remains safe down there. But if you hear anything about that, that's, that's, that's what that was, but, you know, I got to thank residents, because one of the things during this storm is, we had people calling us and basically saying that this is an issue. There was another one where somebody called and said, "Hey, one of your, your catch basins is blocked." And this catch basin was somewhere where you wouldn't think there was a catch basin, and it wasn't on any of our maps. So we trudged in there through the water and found it and opened it up, and now we've actually mapped it and we'll take care of it. Of course, it was the beavers that actually blocked it up, so, you know, the state's going to help us with that, with that issue. But, you know, we always talk about, if you see something, say something, but this also goes for, you know, items around town, because we can't be everywhere, and if we know about certain items, we can, we can hopefully address it, you know, especially this stuff on town property. Coming up is the carnival. It's the 12th Annual Summer Days Community Carnival, it begins tomorrow, Wednesday 21st, through Saturday, the 24th, at the former Golf Land Route 83. The gates open Wednesday through Friday, 6:00 p.m. to Saturday, 5:00 p.m. All rides are unlimited with the purchase of a wristband, and individual ride tickets are also available. As everybody knows, it's a partnership with the town on this, and Polly and I were down trudging through the water because the field flooded, and I got to thank Public Works again, they showed up and were able to unclog, unclog it and dry it out, and we were able to keep the carnival going. Polly, do you want to say a little bit about where the money goes to that?
Yeah, we have three groups.
Use your mic.
We have three individual groups that work with us, there's part of us that work for Park and Rec, and all, it's divided in three ways. Park and Rec, and that goes to provide camperships for kids that can't afford all or part of the campership. We also have the Exchange Club, and their money goes to Kids Safe, protects all kinds of kids here in Vernon and statewide. And the third group is Maple Grove, they do Project Graduation, they do Fidelco Dogs, and two or three other smaller groups that they don't donate their money. Every penny that we earn, the four days that we're open, and through selling sponsorships for the carnival rides, all goes back into the community one way or the other. And I have to give the guys at Public Works a big thank you for being there Sunday and rolling out fire hose and bringing pumps in, because one of the drains at Golf Land was plugged, and as soon as we got, found out where the drain was and cleaned it out, we saw appreciative amount of water disappear, and hopefully, we don't have the rain that's coming tomorrow, because we want to open tomorrow. And again, hopefully, everybody will come and see us and have a good time.
Thank you, Polly. And like I said, Public Works were out all weekend, so it was good that they were there and were able to come down and help us.
I promised them coffee and brownies, so I've got, when the heat goes down a little bit, I'll cook some brownies for them.
Well, you know, Town Council's next August, you can bring those brownies in here, too.
I thought you were on a diet.
I'll bake some with you.
Polly's a famous brownies. All right. So the next thing we want to talk about is the rectangular rapid flashing beacons with battery and solar charges that have been, we started to install in the five Vernon locations, West Street, Hartford Turnpike, Dobson Road, at Bird Street, and Center Road, and Phoenix Street and Washington Street. So, two of these are up, Center Road and Phoenix and Washington, and we're, we are working on permits to get, for the three to be installed on the state roads. Obviously, going through the state kind of slows us down a little bit. But a total of 10 units will be installed to each location, and the units are designed to communicate and activate wirelessly. Basically, they're communicating back and forth between each side of the road. I think this brings awareness that there's somebody going into the crosswalk, and if somebody's approaching and the yellow lights are going, that means, please stop and allow the pedestrian the right of way. I think it's a great safety addition, and I want to thank the residents who reached out, and were instrumental in coming to the Town Council to get this done. Swimming this summer, as you know, all this rain's creating havoc on our swimming areas, and right now, we have one facility open each day from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Part of that's because we can't find enough lifeguards. Nehaka Beach, which is 184-5 Greer Road, is open Mondays and Wednesdays, 10 to 5. Community Pool, 375 Hartford Turnpike, is open Tuesdays and Thursdays, 10 to 5. And Valley Falls Beach, 300 Valley Falls Road, is open Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays from 10 to 5. If you have questions, please feel free to call Parks and Recreation, 860-870-3520. And like I said, due to the heavy rain and water flow, the town of Vernon and North Central Health District Department are testing the water quality regularly. Any changes to this schedule will be on the department's recorded announcement and on, and on social media, on our social media, we like to get it out on the police social media and the town social media if we're closing one of those. Valley Falls did just close recently, and a lot of it was due to the amount of rain and the bacteria counts went up. So we closed it, we moved everybody to the other parks. Paving project update, presently, the Department of Public Works is paving the parking lots of Northeast School, Center Road School, and Maple Street Schools. Crack sealing on town roads will begin shortly, the wet weather obviously has slowed us down, but we're still on schedule. The solar company, the solar canopy units installed at Center Road School, Lake Street School, and Northeast School are complete. Mike, are we getting the electricity flowing now? Yes, sir. We are, thank you. Windermere Fields, Windermere Fields, hold on. So Windermere Fields, obviously, as everybody knows, has slowed down a little bit, and obviously, the rain's playing havoc with that, too. rain's playing havoc with that, too. But our new bulldozer is, is up, and it's, it's running. I know we've already done some work over there. We have the apron put down. Hold on. So far, we have all our permits in Ellington. The address has been, has been assigned to the property. Sediment fencing's been installed, a tracking pad has been installed. We've started a strip off, stripping off the top soil. We've ordered the laser system for the dozer. I believe that's in now, right? Yeah, that's in. And the millings have been delivered from our HS track for the driveway. So we're moving along. We still want to have a, kind of a grand opening, bring the town council down there, kind of show you, hey, this, this is how it's going, and show you your new piece of equipment that you purchased and how it works. As soon as this rain stops, we're going to get that done.
So distancing.
All right. Something about walking in the mud, always, you know, always throws a little, yeah. There was a question out on social media about the Department of Public Works wash bay. And why isn't it done yet? It's a good question. So I'm going to get into, it's, it's something that we ask about a lot, but there's always a, there's always a reason. Obviously, number one, if there, if there's ever something that takes priority, such as this rainstorm, no matter what project's being worked on, public safety is always number one. But obviously, everybody knows the foundation was poured, drainage was installed, the oil-water separator's installed, the piping to the sewers installed, and connections made. Inspections were performed by the building official and the sewer departments. Then we brought the fire marshal in. Square footage of the building's too big. We would have to add sprinklers to the entire building, which would be a considerable cost. But there is a way that, around that, and basically, it's putting a firewall in between the, the wash bay and the building itself, which is what we've decided we're going to do. In the meantime, our building, our, building, not our building officials, our maintenance, our two, hold on, I'm getting ahead of my notes, guys. Sorry about that. Our building maintainers, the guys that make, that build these things, two retired. We brought, got another one. He put in for a job, and he moved over to a truck driver. COVID happened, and all the two new, or the maintainers we had and new, the two maintainers we have now were all assigned to basically install barriers throughout the entire town, mainly Plexiglas. And like I said, you know, public safety is always number one. So that, that slowed it down. And we come out of COVID, and now we're into, all projects are put on hold until the cost of materials goes down. As you guys know, you try and buy a sheet of plywood today compared to, you know, five months ago, the, the numbers are just massive. We had already bought all the wood for the garage down at the old Salvation Army building. And if anybody's been by there, that's almost completely constructed, because we had bought that wood already. So we used it. You also know that Citizens Block was also put on hold. We talked about that recently, too. Same thing, the cost of materials is just through the roof. And, you know, spending hundreds of thousands of dollars more on a project just is not gonna, if we wait a few months, the numbers are coming down. In fact, we're already seeing the numbers come down on these materials. So that is, that project is still viable, still going to happen, and will happen as soon as our, soon as the emergencies stop and, and we can afford the materials. Sorry about, I got quite a few things. National Night Out. The Vernon Police Department and the Vernon Community Alliance are proud to, again, co-sponsor National Night Out. Actually, Rockville Community Alliance is running it. Tom, you want to say anything real quick about that?
Never stopped me from speaking onto something.
Oh, I know.
Again, thank you all for being part of it, the police department, and for the town council. Please come join us. We always have a large number of organizations there. A lot of people from the community are there, and we really look forward to having a fun community event. It's going to be at the Ladden Hall parking lot this year because of the construction at St. Bernard's. So we've had to do some shifting around, some moving. But we're having a lot of good community support. And as always, thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
You're welcome.
It's, I'm sorry, it's August 3rd, and the rain date is, the rain date, the rain date is August 4th.
What's the, what's the rain date to the rain date?
Well, you know, you know, the next big storm is going to be August 3rd. I'm predicting that now, so.
Like last year?
Yeah.
And that's 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. If I remember correctly, it was either last year or the year before, we were holding the tents down because it was raining.
We were the only spot in the state that got rained that year, and that day.
Been biased or many others?
We still had fun, and it was still a good night.
And free hot dogs, by the way, free food.
Hot dogs?
Hot dogs for you, Brian.
Free hot dogs, all right.
Brown?
All right. So the, the next thing is the, the 2021 Plan of Conservation and Development. The, obviously, is the draft has been released, and the Planning and Zoning Commission is encouraging public review. The commission has scheduled a public hearing for September 14th, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. in the Vernon Town Hall Memorial Building, 3rd floor of Council Chambers, 14 Park Place, Vernon, to hear comments and answer questions. The POCD is available for review on the Vernon, the Town Vernon website, vernon-ct.gov, and in hard copy form in the Town Clerk's Office, 14 Park Place, and the Town Planner's Office, 55 West Main Street. Again, that's September 14th, 2021, at 7:00 p.m., if you want to have any comments. Chief John Kelly, it's official, Officer John Kelly assumed command on July 9th, 2021, and we are pleased to have Chief Kelly leading the Vernon Police I'd ask him if he's having second thoughts yet, but not yet. The return of July in the sky. Due to the string of bad weather prior to the event, and the weather forecast that day, we constantly monitored the weather. Thanks to our talented public safety departments, working with our weather service, we were able to keep things moving and have this very important community event. The weather reports gave us just enough warning to make the call. Let me tell you how it really went. Mike called me and said, hey, they're saying the rain's like almost here. What? All right, fire them off. I wait a few minutes, wait a few minutes, I call Mike back. Hey, you guys are firing off. Oh, no, we're going to do it in a couple minutes. No, 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 right now. Let's get it done. And it was a great show. It was fast. I mean, I couldn't keep up with how many shells were going up at the same time. The finale happened, and what happened? After the last shell, the skies opened. And I'm not talking just a little rain. It poured. Anybody that wasn't outside at the time, I'm telling you, it was, it was like, there's the last one, and so, you know what, we, we actually condensed the fireworks show from the, the half hour. I think we condensed it down to about 10 minutes. And so we had a grand finale for 10 minutes, and it was phenomenal. I want to thank everyone who braved the weather and made this event a success. And the weather, I'll tell you, the forecast, these guys we hired are pretty good, because we, Tom and I walked them out, we're telling everybody, it's coming. The rain's going to be here. They say the rain's coming between five, what did it say, 5:00 and 5:30, no, 5:15 and 5:30. At like 5:28, the rain happened. Every, we were all in the old senior center, except some who braved it out there, which they quickly realized they made a mistake and came in. Rain ended. We started to set up again, and we got a call from the weather guy. He says, it's coming again. So we went in, and he said, but after that, it's supposed to be clear. And then they called us again, just as the fireworks were going. And we got it in, everybody. So it was, it was an As many have read, the town is receiving $2 million state, $2 million state grant to clean up Daniel's Mill, advancing our plans for the gateway to the historic downtown district. This grant is an important next step in, in moving the mill closer to redevelopment. We are currently working with the state on, on the contracting portion of the grant, and continue to work in our partnership with the developer's team. In the meantime, we are proceeding with some additional testing utilizing previous grant funds. We're also starting to be, the process of cleaning out Daniel's Mill of the stuff that's in there. So I know Public Works filled three dumpsters last weekend. So there's quite a bit of stuff in there. The senior center update. We continue to move forward with more in-house programs as more, oh, tripping on myself here, sorry, guys. We continue to move forward with more in-house programs. We've reopened the fitness center and continue to increase the capacity program already in place. The pavilion is open, and outdoor games are open. Most programs will start, will require advanced sign up. A new program was added this month with the assistance of Vernon Sergeant Chris Prupowicz, exactly how it spelled, how it sounds. Sergeant Prupowicz initiated a pickleball training program. Has anybody seen Chris?
No.
Chris, you know, he is very tall. And if you've ever seen the pickleball court, it's really small. I was trying to visualize that, but, but he went down, and he had 20 participants in, actually instructed on, on how to play pickleball. And that's part, you know, another part of our police outreach program. So I'm very pleased that he was able to do that. And he's going to set, he's going to do it again. I think it's in, August 6th, 10:00 a.m. I know Julie signed up. So anybody that's retired, sign up quick. Get down there and learn how to play pickleball.
Are we retired?
No, no, not you. I'm telling you, the retired people. Come on, get down there. I was looking at Tom.
Tom, I'll go here.
You've got to go find out, August 6th. All right. The center's work with the police department is a perfect example of our community engagement. And, and trust me, they're engaged in other ways down there. The call center for the senior center is 860-870-3680 with any questions about any of the programs at the center. All right. All right. Update on the Main Street Bridge in Tocqueville. This project is on schedule, is to be completed November 2021. The vendor has removed the decking, and the historic truss has been cleaned and painted. Going forward, some rehab work will be done to strengthen these elements. New foundation supports are being installed. The reinforcing steel and concrete work is scheduled to begin once the rehab work is completed. This $2 million project is being overseen by the Connecticut Department of Transportation, and the town will be reimbursed 80% of the cost of the entire project. That project's been in, in the works for a long time. That's the Main Street Bridge in Tocqueville. Yep. And we're saving the actual trusses, which, you know. Our poet, our poet laureate. I'd like to take the opportunity to thank Peggy Dietz, the Town of Vernon's first ever poet laureate, for her work during our, during her appointment. She provided the town with many poems about events taking place in town, and assisted with creative programming at the library. We wish her well in her new endeavors. The new poet laureate, as originally designed, will be selected from students at Rockville High School sometime in September. Stay tuned. As you guys remember, Peggy was given a one-year term. She did fantastic. And thanks to, you know, because of COVID, we really couldn't get any of our students down there to do it. So we extended her another year. But as the program, like I said, was started, we wanted to bring this out to the Rockville High School students. So that will happen this September. COVID. This is a, oh, I'm sorry. There's an item relative to the FEMA and the Coronavirus Relief Fund reimbursement on the agenda this evening for your approval. This item will reimburse allowable costs charged to the ambulance medical services fund in the amount of 34, $344,225. This is that first chunk of money that we got from the federal government. And it doesn't include the rest of the money that we'll be talking about, probably at the next meeting or one of the coming meetings. But what we want to do is reimburse the ambulance medical services fund for the extra monies that they spent during COVID. By doing so, if you look at the amount that we're reimbursing, that should be enough, because we have an ambulance replacement fund in that fund. That should be enough to buy a new ambulance in the future. So we're kind of thinking ahead and having the money available. So when it comes time to replace one of the ambulances, we already have the money available to do that. All right. And we'll talk about that a little later. Shakespeare is coming to the Rockville Public Library. There will be a free Shakespeare in the park, summer performance on Saturday, August 7th, at 7:00 p.m., and Sunday, August 8th, at 2:00 p.m. Performances are free and open to everyone. A crowdfunding campaign to help fund the concert, is concerts, is underway to help cover the cost of the performances. If you're interested in donating, please call Sean Gately at 860-870-3637 for more information. Bring a strong arts presence to the downtown Vernon as part of my vision for the, for our community's future, and something I've been focused on. The arts enrich us in so many ways, including by fostering a sense of community. Bring, bring a picnic, bring a picnic lunch, or visit one of our downtown Vernon's restaurants and join the fun. This event is held rain or shine. So it's going to be in the upper parking lot at the library, and should be an interesting show. And the last thing is the dog park, but we already covered that. All right. Thank you, guys. That was a long one, but we missed one of our meetings. So let's move on to consent agenda. Mr. Mayor, move the consent agenda as written. Seconded by Laura. Is there any, are we pulling that one item or not? No? Okay, all in favor? Unanimous. All right, under new business, new business number one.
Mr. Mayor, the town council hereby approves the disposal of assets for the Rockville Public Library as disclosed on the request for disposal of asset, of fixed asset forms.
Seconded by Julie. All right, any questions? No? Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous. New business number two?
The town council, sorry. The town council, consistent with the Town of Vernon Personnel Rules and Regulations, Sections 4.1b, entitled Job Descriptions, hereby adopts the job description of police captain as presented.
Second.
Seconded by Polly. All right, questions? And the, the chief is here, who assisted in, in preparing this. Actually, Linda, did you, were you able to point out the grammatical?
Correction.
Is your microphone on?
Yes, I did find a small correction on the second page. One, two, three, fourth paragraph. The noise level in the work environment is, should be stricken. So the noise level in the work environment can range from quiet.
Good. Did you get it? All right. Did you have any questions as well?
I don't have any questions, but I would like to say I think the additions are terrific. Coming from a human resources background, I was especially pleased to see the addition that, and of course, I can't find it now, the addition to evaluate. That's an issue that a lot of organizations have difficulty with evaluating. And, and employees deserve to be evaluated, so they know if, if they're doing a good job, they need to hear that. If they need to make some corrections, that's important for them to know, too. So again, I think all of the additions were great. I, I appreciate what was done in terms of improving the job description. Thank you.
Julie.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Was anything taken out of here? I see the additions in yellow, but was anything taken out that you changed by eliminating it?
Through the mayor, not really. We, we maybe changed some of the language a little bit and updated it, added more detail to it. But for the most part, there was not much, I don't think there was anything that was eliminated. In fact, more was added, especially when it came to experience and training and the, the physical abilities required for the job.
Okay. And does, in doing so, did the wage classification change, or does that stay the same?
Through the mayor, it stayed the same. The town council in 2018 had raised it from an E6A to an E7A. So it, it was just updated and increased three years ago.
Right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else? Brian?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. And the thing we're looking at in the PC, the physical demands part is like backlit in yellow, but not the same highlighted in yellow. Is there specific reason? Do you know what I mean? Like each letter is, look at that, each letter is yellowed. Like each letter is, look at that, each letter is yellowed like, uh?
Oh, no, they were supposed to be yellow.
It's supposed to look like that, yeah. It's, uh, yeah, see? But look at the yellow behind the, yeah. So I was wondering if that was?
It's not even yellow on this one.
Through the mayor, the physical demands and the work environment, those, uh, those should be yellowed. Um, if you look at the old job description, um, it, it doesn't have much for the, um, the physical assessment portion.
All right, thank you. And then another question concerning that, which is really my, brought my attention to there. Is, is there specific physical demands for the police department and police officers themselves that should be, or is that separate from the job description?
This is just for the captains.
Yeah, I know, but is there, like?
To get hired?
Well, like to be an officer, you have to run a mile and the, is there specific ones for a captain's position too?
Uh, through the mayor, it, uh, I think the, the requirements you're talking about are established by post for a new recruit officer, uh, that, that, the running, the running requirement and the strength requirement. Um, there's, once you're certified, there is, there's not an additional demand, um, as you're increasing rank.
Okay. Thank you. I wasn't sure.
I had recommended a 20-mile swim, but somebody didn't like that.
Just, just from here to stop and shop, you could swim. What are you talking about?
Any other questions? Oh, Tom.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, chief, as someone who's intimately familiar with this particular position, uh, is it too much? I mean, I read through this and I'm saying that this is a lot of work. And it seems that, you know, has, has more been added to it?
Um, through the mayor, it, it is a lot of work. But it's, it's managed like, kinda as a team through the chief and the captain together. And, uh, as captain, I myself delegated some of these responsibilities and duties, um, to ease the burden. So I don't think it's too much, um, but it, the captain's a busy position and, and as, as expected to be.
Uh, through the mayor, another thing is on grievances. Uh, Chief Kenny used to say that he was very much involved with the union grievances, yet I see this as part of the captain's position. Is that something that you work in conjunction with captain and the chief?
Uh, through the mayor, yes. Um, the captain is the step one of the grievance procedure with the Police Officers Association and the Dispatchers Association.
Uh, to Dawn, this has to do with essential job functions. The very last sentence, regular and punctual attendance. Uh, for me, that doesn't seem like a complete sentence. Uh, it, it just seems to be popped in there.
Uh, through the mayor, that, that's what we've done for the last several years is, um, just add regular and punctual attendance. It is considered essential, an essential job function, uh, for all of our jobs, but as we upgrade them, um, we put that in there.
Well, I'm okay with the concept. It's just that the construction of the sentence, uh, it seems a little bit awkward to me. And I just wanted to point that out to you. If that's, this is normal contract, uh, language, having something like this there?
Through the mayor and a job description, yes.
Uh, I did notice that there seemed to be a lack of a period under the very first sentence, uh, under the general statement of duties on this particular item. Maybe it's just what I downloaded from my system.
Through the mayor, we can add a period after classified service.
All right, good. Thank you both. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right. Linda and Tom cannot grade my papers.
Well, you know, I'm the tutor now, so I could do this.
Okay, there you go. There you go. Any other questions? Oh, Mike.
Through you, Mayor, thank you. Um, I was just, could you elaborate on the, the paragraph here for the over, they oversee, um, coordinate the workforce, the police department and the functional areas of administration, investigation, training, patrol dispatch records and animal control. So are they the supervisor to the animal control department that we have?
Through the mayor, yes. Uh, several years ago, uh, we had moved animal control. Animal control was overseen by administration. However, it is more of a, a public safety factor in that, um, you know, we have issues with animals and wildlife that occur on the weekends and they are a 24/7 operation with multiple supervisors.
So I'm assuming it's safe to say that they would be trained in, uh, animal instances like our animal patrol officers are in case of an emergency or something?
Through the mayor, they're not, um, because they will not respond in absence of an animal control officer, which has to be certified through the Department of Agriculture. But, um, they would work within the confines of the Department of Agriculture, who certifies and oversees, um, animal control officers.
Okay. Thank you. Laura.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just, I was listening to what, um, Councilmember Nadiya was saying, and I don't think it's more work. If you can clarify, I think it's just clarified. I think many of the things might have been more understood that that's what they did, but, um, is this making it clearer and more detailed what they're doing, not more?
Through the mayor, that, that is a fair assessment, that it is more defined, uh, rather than broad-based and broad-brushed as to what the, uh, the duties are.
Thank you.
The, the chief actually had a lot to say and it was given to him and he helped with this. Anybody else? Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, guys. Brian, uh, new business number three.
Mr. Mayor, resolved, the town council hereby approves the allocation of funds received from the coronavirus relief fund in the amount of $344,225 to reimburse allowable costs charged to the ambulance medical services special revenue fund.
Seconded by Laura.
Seconded by Laura. Questions? Well, basically, I'll, I'll explain what this is. So this is, this was the, um, the first round of funding, correct, Jeff?
Yeah, it was technically the second round. The first round was the submittal of reimbursable expenses.
That's right.
So the state realized that that was gonna be a lot of work and they decided to allocate the next round of funding to this, to the towns.
Okay.
So this was received in December. The town council voted to approve it in, in January.
So I had, I had gone to Jeff and asked, you know, if we're reimbursing, we put a lot more mileage on our ambulances, we're doing a lot more work with them, could we use the money to buy an ambulance? And essentially, this fund has the, uh, monies in it to buy a new ambulance. And so what we did is we reimbursed the fund, which puts the fund where it needs to be. So the next, when we have to buy a new ambulance, the money's already there. Um, and I think that's a pretty fair way to do it because, uh, you know, we did spend quite a bit of money on, uh, the coronavirus and, and, well, COVID, basically fighting COVID and, uh, you know, making sure that our ambulance crews were protected. And, uh, you know, I can't say enough for the ambulance crews that, that helped out during our, uh, our vaccine clinics. Jean was the funniest by far. I mean, she, if anybody went through, Jean was there, she was having you exercise. Okay? Um, I did not go that day because, you know, exercise, oh my. Just kidding. Any questions about, about this? Tom?
Thank you, Your Honor. On paragraph two, it says that it's to be used to cover payroll for the employees, yet we're using it for the payroll, I'm sorry, the ambulance. Uh, will there be other funds to cover the payroll costs involved?
So the payroll costs are all part of this fund. Everything with the ambulance is paid for out of the fund. So when we're reimbursing for the payroll, we're just putting the money back in there. There was enough money in there to pay the payroll, but we were able, because we were reimbursing it, we're actually putting in there. And it's still gonna be used by that fund, but we're gonna be using it for?
Ambulance also.
An ambulance.
Approximately how much does an ambulance go for these days? They seem to be pretty expensive from what I recall.
So we, the last, remember, the last three times, we took the old boxes and we put them on a new chassis.
Right.
You can only do that one time. So I know a brand-new large box, um, the last time I, we talked about was like 205,000, but that was like five years ago. So I, do you know what they cost now, Jeff?
I, I don't, but, you know, the town that I, I live in, I think it's around $400,000 for, for one of the big ones.
That would be fully equipped, I would imagine.
Yeah. So the, um, the van type go for half that cost. Um, somewhere around half that cost. We went through this whole thing on the, the last time we, we bought it. And now they have like the extended van type. And one of the things that we're looking at is the fact that we're doing a lot more trips to Hartford. Um, and with wear and tear, uh, fuel economy and the rest of it, we are actually debating on looking at getting a, uh, one of those vans for the next one. But still a lot of conversation has to take place on that.
How much money is in this fund? The mayor?
Through the mayor, so as of last year, at the end of the year, there was $294,000 in that fund.
As of last year? So now we're adding an additional fund based on this?
Correct. So what we'll do through the mayor, we will offset the payroll with this money.
Mm-hmm.
That will then, we will go through the whole reconciliation, year-end processing. We'll do the audit on the account and then we'll come up with the available fund balance.
And that will go to the ambulance fund?
Oh, that's in the ambulance fund. Yes. So this money is received, it, it was to be used for unbudgeted expenses related to COVID. As my memo states out, we reasonably believe all of our expenses to be reimbursable 100% by FEMA. So the next best scenario for this money was to use it for payroll for those substantially devoted to mitigating or responding to COVID-19. That fits in with the ambulance, the payroll of the ambulance fund. So technically, we're putting that money in there to offset the payroll, not to do anything specific with it going forward. Once it's audited, that's when we'll make the determination to the mayor, through the council, of what to do with that money. And the ambulance purchases are at the top of the list.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
And Tom, all that comes back to us, as you know. When we buy something, we come through the council.
Yes, of course.
All right. Any other questions? No? All right, all those in favor? Unanimous. All right, uh, new business number four.
Mr. Mayor, the town council hereby authorizes the application for supplemental administrative funds in the amount of $4,569 provided by the Connecticut Office of Early Childhood and further authorizes Mayor Daniel S. Champagne or his designee to sign any and all documents for sale.
Second.
Seconded by Polly. Uh, Michelle is on vacation. And I don't say that often, so she's not here tonight. I hope she's enjoying her time off after doing double duty for as long as she did. But Mike is in her place to answer any of your questions. Any questions? Oh, you know, Michelle, Michelle writes things up to the point where there's, you know, she's, she's pretty good about this. All right. All those in favor? Unanimous. I was waiting for it. All right. Introduction of ordinances. All right, Brian?
Mr. Mayor, proposed ordinance entitled Ordinance Number Blank TBD, an ordinance entitled possession and consumption of alcoholic liquor and cannabis prohibited in town-owned or town-leased property, smoking and vaping, oh, wait a minute.
I don't know.
No, no, I should be reading it out here. Yep. Sorry. My fault. Uh, the town council, consistent with Chapter Five, Sections Five and Six of the Vernon Town Charter, entitled Public Hearing on and Publication of Ordinances, hereby schedules a public hearing regarding Ordinance Number TBD, an ordinance entitled possession and consumption of alcoholic liquor and cannabis prohibited in town-owned or town-leased property, smoking and vaping prohibited in town-owned or town-leased property, repealing Ordinance One Seventy, Number Seventy-four, entitled Possession, Consumption, Distribution, or Sale of Alcoholic Beverages on School Grounds in School Buildings prohibited, and Ordinance Number Two Ninety-five, entitled Possession or Consumption of Alcoholic Liquors in Town Parks and Recreation Areas prohibited. August 17th, 2021 at 7:35 PM, located at Town Hall Memorial Building, Town Council Chambers, Third Floor, 14 Park Place, Vernon, Connecticut, to hear comments and take the necessary action relative to the proposed ordinance.
Seconded by Polly. All right. So when the, when the marijuana bill was put in place, the, the bill contained language that, uh, essentially you cannot smoke it on state property, state parks, and, um, any town, state-owned buildings. They took care of themselves, but never put anything for the towns and basically said the towns, if they want to prohibit it being smoked in their parks or on, uh, buildings or their, basically properties run by, by the town, they had to pass an ordinance themselves. Um, and just so everybody knows, you know, when we did the fireworks, you could smell the marijuana in downtown here and throughout the park at Henry Park. All right? Our plan that night was if we caught somebody smoking it, we would ask them to leave the park and, and basically walk them out. Um, but the problem is with, with, uh, the reason we don't like people smoking in our parks is secondhand smoke and marijuana does the same exact thing. If it creates a danger to the people around you, if you have to drive there, you're gonna drive away. Those are the types of things that, that we think about. And that's why this is being presented tonight. Um, you know, these two ordinances are what we deal with as a town council. As far as any of the buildings and stuff, that all goes through, uh, plant, planting and zoning. All right? So any questions about this ordinance? Julie?
Through you, Mr. Mayor.
And our town attorney's here too.
I'm town attorney. Good evening. It, it's probably just a, um, it's, can you just explain to me what the difference between number one and number two is? Like, they seem exactly the same and I know I'm missing something. Sorry, Lou.
Lou, why don't you answer that?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Is your microphone on?
I'm sorry. Thank you, Your Honor, through the mayor. Uh, ordinance, uh, the first ordinance, uh, re, it replaces two existing ordinances that are currently on the books that deal specifically with consumption of, uh, alcohol in school grounds and, uh, parks and recreation areas. It replaces it with one ordinance that, uh, in addition to, um, providing, uh, for cannabis, uh, it also, um, contains a general prohibition on any town-owned or town-leased properties. So it would be town buildings, town recreation areas, school grounds, school buildings.
Trails.
It, it pretty much covers everything with the exception of, uh, roads and highways. Uh, and that's, uh, where you get to the next ordinance, uh, which is currently codified as 11 dash four. Uh, this one, uh, is also amended to include the consumption of cannabis, uh, but this deals with, uh, public highways, parking areas and, um, other locations like, um, shopping centers and, uh, other private establishments. There is an exception if that establishment allows, specifically allows for it. Uh, but this kinda, this deals with, uh, consumption of, uh, cannabis and open containers of alcohol and liquor on, you know, like a town street.
Thank you for the clarification. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Other questions? Mike?
Through you, Mayor, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
So this one actually, unless otherwise posted, I'm assuming by a property owner, um, cover, like, say the plaza down the hill here?
No, that is the second one. We'll talk about that one when we get to it.
Okay, okay. Cause it, uh, it, yeah, that's very annoying and unlike, I mean, cigarette smoke's bad enough with the secondhand smoke and vaping as well, but marijuana can actually alter your mind, uh, with the secondhand smoke. Um, so that's mostly disturbing to me. Um, it's, uh, not only the smoke aspect, but it also affects you physically and mentally. So, uh, I'm all for this. Thank you.
Anne?
Um, yes, through you, Your Honor. I didn't actually go and, uh, read the ordinance, but could you talk a little bit about what the penalties are? Um, and I think they must be spelled out in the ordinance.
Yes. Both, uh, penal, both have a penalty, uh, section. It's the, it's the last part of each ordinance and it says, any person who violates any per- It's the last part of each ordinance, and it says, "Any person who violates any provision of this section upon conviction shall be punished in accordance with Section 1-9." That's a different part of our Code of Ordinances, which authorizes a fine of up to $250.
Thank you.
Tom, did you have some?
$250 per what? Per incident?
Yes. Through the mayor, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Brian?
Excuse me here, through you, Mr. Spadacini, in Section 9-1, under E for penalties, it says, "Any person violating the provisions of the section shall be fined, not more than $100." That's the old one?
Through the mayor, yes, that's the old, that's the existing ordinance, yeah. The new ordinance would provide it, would cite you to Section 1-9, which, that section cites a state law which authorizes a fine up to $250.
Okay, I get it, yes, I see number G, letter G, yes. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? All right, we're just voting today to move this to the public hearing. All those in favor? Unanimous. Brian, number two.
Mr. Mayor, the town council, consistent with Chapter Five, Sections Five and Six of the Vernon Town Charter, entitled Public Hearing on and Publication of Ordinances, hereby schedules a public hearing regarding Ordinance Entitled Ordinance Number TBD, an ordinance entitled possession of alcoholic liquor and cannabis in public areas, highways, and parking areas, repealing Ordinance Number 195 entitled possession of alcoholic liquor in public areas, highways, and parking areas, August 17, 2021, directly following public hearing number one, located at Town Hall Memorial Building, Town Council Chambers, Third Floor, 14 Park Place, Vernon, Connecticut, to hear comments and take the necessary action relative to the proposed ordinance.
Seconded by Polly. Questions? Bill?
Thank you, Your Honor. I don't, the way I interpret what's been said here doesn't seem that this would prohibit either the sale of medical marijuana or recreational marijuana, at least in certain parts of town, if passed.
The sale of, and all that is all controlled, isn't controlled by this body, it's controlled by planning and zoning.
So sale is not even an issue in this?
Not in this ordinance.
So then I'm right. It doesn't, this ordinance doesn't prohibit it.
Right. Planning and zoning will be taking that up shortly.
Right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mike?
Through you, Mayor. So this is where my question would come in. So when, like, when you're walking into an establishment just for the thing, like, the larder mat down here, and people are parked in front, smokes parading out the cars and all that stuff, this would in fact give the police department the right to go in there and ticket them on a private property?
Through the mayor, yes, it would.
Okay, unless otherwise maybe published out there, you know?
Unless they had a permission from the property owner to do so.
Good, thank you.
Other questions? Brian?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So is this in contrast to the state's, and I didn't read the law passed up there, where they said you couldn't stop somebody, the police could not stop somebody if they were driving on a public highway and saw them smoking?
Section 112 and 113 of the marijuana bill basically says that if you see somebody smoking marijuana and driving a vehicle, that you cannot pull them over unless you had another violation. This ordinance for town-owned roads and town parking lots, it's a violation of our ordinance, and that should be the grounds to move forward with that. Am I right or wrong on that?
You're correct, and through the mayor, I would further add that the bill passed by the legislature does specifically make it an offense to consume cannabis in a vehicle, even if you're the passenger in the vehicle, so that, this is consistent with state statute.
Yeah, thank you. You're welcome. Anybody else? Polly?
I'd just like to make a statement. I worked as a para in South Windsor schools, and we did many, many programs on marijuana that it was a gateway drug. I am ashamed that this state voted marijuana in, and it's all about the money. We've known for years that it's a gateway drug, and it just extends on and on and on. I'm sure our officers can attest to that. I've seen people on the streets with it, and I would hope at some point that we could, whether it's an ordinance or something, so that we cannot or do not have a marijuana shop where they can purchase it within this town. I'm really offended, because we were training all these kids that drugs were terrible and don't do marijuana because it's a gateway drug, you'll just go from one to the other. And it makes everything that we tried to teach these kids for years almost like a lie to them. And I'm, it really upsets me that this state have put it through, and I can't imagine how much more damage is going to be done to our kids, the number of accidents and everything that are going to happen to it. I've talked to many people, and they said it's a done deal because it's all about the money. And I think our kids' lives are worth a whole lot more than the money that this is going to bring into our state.
Well, I think everybody knows where I stand on this. But, you know, the sad thing is, is the money's not even offsetting our taxes. It's crazy, you know, people ask me about it. I said, you know, it's not about legalization or non-legalization, it's, you got to read the bill, you're going to be disgusted. All right, question, more, any more questions on the sending this ordinance to public hearing? All right, all those in favor? Thank you, unanimous. That's what we call a move towards public safety. All right, minutes.
Mr. Mayor, the town council waives the reading of the minutes of the regular town council meeting on June 15, 2021, and that minutes of said meeting be approved.
Seconded by Polly. Any corrections or deletions? No? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Mr. Mayor, the town council waives the reading of the minutes of the special town council meeting on July 6, 2021, and that minutes of said meeting be approved.
Seconded by Polly. I had a siren in my ears for years, so it's like, if I'm looking in that direction and I see somebody talk, I can hear them quicker, I don't know why. So Polly got the second on that. Any corrections, deletions? No? All those in favor? I have no idea. You weren't. You don't have to. What do you want to do? All right, unanimous. All right, Brian?
Mr. Wakefield, motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Mr. Wakefield. Who seconded that? Somebody over here. Seconded by Mary Ann. All right, all those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, guys.